Session, April 15th is now 4:30. We are here this evening and Bill is here via the telephone. Are you there, Bill?
Yes, ma'am.
You're welcome. Thank you for joining us. Okay, we're going to go down to the item three and before we do, I'm going to ask our city manager to address the council. Julie?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We're pleased to present to you this evening the fiscal year 2020 budget. And doesn't that sound strange? 2020. So you'll see that it reflects that we're a growing community with the needs of a growing community. And the budget is reflective of those needs, but it's also very conservative in its approach to that growth. The operating budget you'll see is only growing by 4.7%. And in addition, we're pleased to be presenting our first five-year CIP, which is fully funded and fully deliverable. The key projects in the first year are the rec campus, the two fire stations, the water surface treatment project, and the first steps in the Goodyear Civic Square at Estrella Falls project. Clearly, this is a large document and it's reflective of collaboration between not only council, our citizen survey, but also all the hard work of our entire organization. And it's one of the most important documents that you, as an elected body, pass each year establishing the policies on behalf of your community. So we look forward to the discussion this evening and again on the 22nd. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to our budget manager, Lori Wigg.
Thank you. Before I do that, Bill, is this coming through clearly to you?
Yeah, it's clear as it can be, I guess. But thank you.
You're welcome. All right. So, Council, a couple of things. We talked about today, so I'll ask you as soon as I introduce it, all right? Item 3.1 is a discussion on the fiscal year 2020, City Manager's Recommended Budget and a Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan. And so, of course, we have our fear, Lori Wigg and Roth here, Wigg and Roth here. And so my question is to you, how are we breaking this up tonight?
I think when we went through this last year, we did kind of ask questions as we went. You know, so we'll go through kind of a section on the overview of the budget and I can check to see if there's questions then.
Okay.
And then I'll stop at those points, but then perhaps when we get to the departments, we'll just, after each department, if there's questions.
All right, good. I think that last year worked well, so I just wanted to substantiate that. All right, so we have the floor.
All righty. Thank you so much. We are here to kind of walk through the manager's recommended budget. The first thing that we'll go through is to talk about how this particular budget is in compliance with the financial policies that you have established. As I mentioned, we'll start kind of high. We'll do an overview of the big budget. We'll drill down to the general fund. We'll talk about the capital projects. And then I'll walk through the individual departments, the highlights of the individual department budgets. As you know, you received a packet of materials, both in hard copy and electronic form, that has the essential schedules and requests and those types of things that came through the budget process. And because if I wait till the end, we won't get to this slide, we'll start at the beginning and tell you what steps come after today. We will, we're scheduled for another work session next week. We'll see how we do with this work session and what's needed for the next week. We'll do a budget open house on the 8th of May. Again, that's where we invite the public to come and we provide them with information about the budget that's been recommended. And then there's these legally required publications that we have to do with regard to the budget as well as property tax that will happen in May and June. And then we'll go into those formal steps that we have to do every year of walking through the tentative adoption of the budget, the formal budget adoption, and the public hearing for that, as well as the truth in taxation piece of the property tax. And then we'll do the property tax levy at the end of June. So in terms of the financial policies, your packets included information on each financial policy and a statement on the compliance relative to the recommended budget. All of the items are shown as in compliance. I've just called out two items here to highlight. The first is, when we came to you in March, you adopted a change to the financial policies, which was that we would also adopt a 15% contingency for our enterprise funds similar that we do to, for our general fund. And this budget reflects those contingencies included. So that's a change from prior practice, but it's a very good financial policy to also have those kinds of standards for those enterprise funds because they are funding ongoing operations just as much as the general fund is. The other is, in the area of the debt management policy, there is a debt policy that says general fund debt will be less than 10% of the average of three years of ongoing revenue. The debt that we call general fund is well within that at $1.4 million. It's much less than 10%. But as we did last year for kind of a full disclosure, ballpark debt is ultimately funded by the general fund, so it's recorded in the ballpark revenue or special revenue fund. But it is, if we include it as well as the ballpark's revenue, we're now at 10.2%. And it's similar to where we were last year at the same time on that. So any questions on the other financial policies?
Joe?
Just, just one comment, and I know I sound like a broken record on this one, but in the spirit of the enterprise fund, I do not believe we're fully in compliant of that only because I believe there's reasonable options in which we can collect money from the debt service to be able to pay for it as opposed to charging people outside of our water area for property taxes, which in my view, they shouldn't be paying. So that, again, you know, you've heard this time and time again. I'm hoping at some point when it comes to the rate, we can make us wholly, again, self-sufficient with the enterprise fund because I believe the rate is where it belongs, not on charging those outside of our water area. And I think it's a fairness issue as well. As far as the 15%, I think that's a good move on the enterprise fund. I think it's nice to have that in there as well. And as far as the 10% for the ballpark debt, I know we did the $10 million for the Indians. We treat that with an offset with our revenues. If that's in there, it would probably be a little bit different than the 10%. I just think maybe it should be noted because that was one way we did it, to put it into the funding, but in reality, it's coming out of the fund. And I might not show it that way, but I just want to make sure that that's transparent when that comes out as well.
Mayor, Councilman Pizzillo, we do do that calculation three ways on the general fund debt, including and not including the Indians' debt. And if we include the Indians' debt, we include the Indians' revenue. So we have done the calculation multiple ways, so.
Thank you.
We've tried to match the revenues with the expenditures. And as for the reference to the use of the geo-bond funds for the surface water project, we will, as in, one of the items in the supplemental recommendations is a utility rate study. We will again raise that as something to be considered, a shift in that funding through that process. And that would be most likely the next opportunity to look for a change there.
I appreciate it. The other, one other thing, and it's in the policy, so I'll just briefly mention it, is I know we have a top for property tax at 274. You know, I've been a proponent on a levy because the rate is just a mathematical calculation. And even though we keep the rate the same, the reality is the property taxes are going up because if the assessed valuations have gone up 5% on average, or whatever the case may be, there'll be a 5% increase on the property tax. So I would like to see it on levy, and here's the reason why. If, when we go in and we go out and we actually start asking our citizens for bond authority for specific projects, I'd rather see it driven by projects that our citizens want than some arbitrary number that is a mathematical calculation. Just feel for thought. And I know that's, it is what it is, but I'd just like to make sure I'm on the record for that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes?
Do we also have in here, is it our obligation for the first responders, is it their pension type obligation program?
Councilman Mayor, this particular debt management policy is not oriented towards the type, that type of debt. So you are correct that we characterize that liability as debt and as an area where if we wanted to pay down debt, it would be an excellent area to pursue, but that is not calculated in this cap. This is specific to principal and interest payments required on bonds or outside financed debt.
Yes, Julie, go ahead.
And just to make a follow-up to that comment, you might recall that council did adopt a pension debt policy within the last couple of meetings. And so that is a policy on the records, but it's separate and apart from the financial policies.
Thank you. Oh, you all right, Bren?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions before I call Bill? Bill, any question?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All righty. So with that, we'll move on to an overview of the budget, kind of the assumptions that we used to get to where we are today. Overall, in terms of revenue, sales taxes, there's no rate increases or rate decreases assumed in this, consistent with the conversations we've had earlier in the year with you at various settings. We've set the construction sales tax estimate for next year equal to this year's estimate. There's no reason to believe we won't continue to collect at the levels we're collecting now. And non-construction sales tax, we've assumed a 4.5% increase over what we're estimating we will collect this year. We did not apply that 4.5% growth to some unusual use tax activity we're having this year. We're experiencing some one-time use tax coming in as new businesses set up their operations and buy equipment that they are required to pay use tax on. The state shared revenue, since we last spoke with you, we have increased that revenue estimate by 1.2 million. That's as a result of receiving information from the Arizona League of Cities. About half of that was income tax, which was unexpected because that information is shared two years in arrears, but there must have been some audit activity. And the rest is in, most of the rest of it's in sales tax. We have not reflected increased portion for our population change. We won't have the population information until May, unfortunately, after you adopt the budget. But we would anticipate we will have a higher portion coming to Goodyear with those new population estimates. The development-related revenues are aligned with ongoing costs, saying that we are collecting development-related revenues much higher than our ongoing costs right now, and we are spending one-time dollars to support those high levels of activity. But to be conservative, we're continuing to just assume that revenue is at that level that supports our ongoing costs. And we are adding, recommending some supplemental position additions in the development-related areas, and the revenues have been adjusted accordingly with those additions. And then last, in terms of revenues, the water and wastewater rates, we do assume a rate increase in January, consistent with the rate of plan that was adopted for the current five-year plan. Property tax, the, I've got here the levies and the rates for this year and what we're proposing in the budget. The combined levy will go to 15.9 million. That is, we've been talking over the last several years about when will we achieve our prior peak, so that does exceed our fiscal year 10 peak for the levy. So we're just now getting back to where we were before the recession in terms of property tax, the levy, as well as the assessed valuations. So both are basically at or near where we were in 2010. You'll see that the rate is slightly dropping from, the combined rate from $1.735 to $1.7332. That is just a function of the way that the primary property tax works, where we're levying the maximum allowable, which is 2% growth plus new construction. And then the secondary is based on our forecast, our known debt service, as well as a forecast for the debt service, the geo-bonds that you authorized recently be sold to support the CIP. And at the bottom there, we're showing, in the current year, if you had a home that was assessed at $100,000, your tax for Goodyear would be $173.50. We went ahead and assumed the maximum appreciation that would be allowed on an existing property of 5%. And if that 5% appreciation happened on an individual property, their taxes with the rate change and their assessed valuation change would go to $181.99 for their, for their Goodyear portion of their property taxes.
We might get some calls on that one. Joe?
What was the number, I think it was 08, was it like 148 or something like that?
Yeah, I think it was 149, or 14, yeah, 148, 149, right in there.
Okay. So it's about a million, it took us 10 years?
Yes.
To get above what it was 10 years ago, as far as the levy? I think that's an important fact to highlight. And again, when you're talking about the property tax, on $100,000, you're looking at an increase of about $8. If it's $200,000, it's $16, which would be about a buck fifty a month. So again, I appreciate you showing this, but again, the impact on our property tax versus that of some of the others that are on there is minor compared to some of the other larger ones you have on there. So I appreciate you showing this. Thank you.
Any other comments? Bill? I guess not. Go ahead.
No, ma'am, no comments.
Thank you.
All righty. So the recommended budget is $516 million. Kind of where the money comes from, a lot of this year's budget, that 45% in that orange is coming from other revenues and fund balances. A lot of that is associated with the capital program. Most notably, we're about to sell $27 million in geo-bonds, and those end up in ending balance or beginning balance to pay for those capital projects next year. In terms of the fund, where we account for them, about a third of the budget is from the general fund. That's the sales taxes, property taxes that support the basic government services. And then if you look, in this particular case, about a third or a little bit more than a third is going towards capital project activity, and we'll see more of that in a little while. In terms of expenditures, the day-to-day operating budget, or you sometimes hear us refer to this as the base budget, is where we pay for the salaries and the fuel to operate vehicles and equipment, the supplies, pens, pencils, chemicals. And then there's also contractual and inflationary adjustments have been made to the base budget. If you look at something called one-time, it includes one-time supplementals and carryovers, those are items that you really only have to do once, or you do them once every 10 years, you know, something like replacing or acquiring a vehicle with a new position or a, most carryovers are capital projects because they generally span more than a year. And as I mentioned earlier, the debt service numbers include existing debt as well as the debt we've been talking about with you over the last couple of weeks. In coming up with the recommended budget, and through the retreat and the other sessions that we've had with council, as well as the community attitude survey, we have focused in on a couple of areas as where this budget is pointed. One is supporting growth in the community as well as the organization itself. As there are more police officers, as there are more building permits being issued, there is a strain on not only those direct service delivery departments, but also on the city's administrative capacity to pay those people and pay the bills and those types of things. So we have positions in here that are both related to that direct service of being there when they knock on the door at economic development or to get a permit, but also the folks that are supporting those activities. As has always been, a focus of the council is maintaining what we have and modernizing what we have, staying current. Those asset management funds are the types of things that are falling in here. Public safety and community, or in terms of recreation opportunities, has continued to be a focus of the council and the citizens. And that continues to be a focus of the budget recommendations. Specifically, you will see the recreation campus and some software to support that program. Attracting and retaining a workforce has always been your focus. I think everybody knows that there, you need the staff here to be able to deliver these services. The budget, the bulk of the budget is related to paying those salaries and benefits. And then meeting our obligations, there are things out there, like we have to deliver water, we have to pick up trash, we need to pay people who donate infrastructure to us, we need to pay them back. So those are the types of things that the budget focuses on there. So the supplemental recommendations are, include 36.3 positions, and in 29.3 of those are in the general fund. We'll go through the individual department budgets later, and we'll talk about where all those positions are being added. But the budget also adds about 7.9 million in one-time items, and the total ongoing increase in the budget is 4.7 million. When we add those positions, we like to show you how that, those new position counts compare to the population growth. So in this chart, the bars represent population, and the blue line represents full-time authorized positions per 1,000 population. The yellow line includes those part-time positions that we need to get our normal work done. Examples would be lifeguards and summer recreation staffing. We've only recently been able to keep, track those part-time as a full-time equivalent, so that's why we're showing you both numbers. But you can see the blue line is not growing as quickly as population, or it's keeping pace with population, so remaining well under the eight positions per 1,000 population. How the, how that 516 million is spent, if you look at the, kind of the bottom half of this pie chart, you will see well over 50% is going into capital projects. And again, we'll kind of go through those in a little while. About a little more than a third of the budget pays for, or a quarter of the budget is paying for day-to-day operations. That relationship changes with the capital program. If you have large unusual projects, it kind of changes that and impacts the total budget. In terms of the CIP, the first year of the CIP, remember we're preparing a five-year CIP now, the first year is almost 300 million, and much of that also is related to utility. A lot of that is the surface water plant. You'll see the purple, the kind of turquoise-y, and the orange, that's all related to enterprise capital project activity. And that 16% geo-bonds is related to primarily the recreation campus and fire station 181's So to kind of compare this proposed budget to the current year budget, the day-to-day operations are, it's going up just under 5% on a citywide basis. The rest of this chart gets kind of, it's kind of that effect of, you have one large capital project, it really skews comparisons. So essentially, you'll see that you have carryover very high compared to this year's budget, primarily the surface water plant. We know that's a multi-year project. Almost all of that project was budgeted this year so we could award the contract. So that's a large reason for that increase. You'll notice contingencies are also up. That's that policy I mentioned earlier with the contingencies in the enterprise funds causing most of that increase. So that's kind of the total budget. I don't know if there's any questions on the total budget before we go into general fund.
Oh, I asked. Who would like to speak? Brennan?
This might not be the right time or not, but what's the, in general funds, the risk reserve? What is, is there a policy for how much risk reserve, or was the definition of that risk reserve for the general, general fund?
The risk reserve was created a number of years ago, and it is used for uncovered liability claims. So if someone were to get hurt and sued the city and they were awarded a large dollar amount, that is to cover the portion that are deductible. And so what we've set that at, it was above the current practice, which we set at three deductibles. We could have to pay two deductibles a year, and it's possible you could have one carrying on from a prior year. So that would be $750,000. You'll see that it's above that, and so the intent is to let it work its way down to that 750, and then we would recommend replenishing it.
Okay. Yeah, I was just looking at the end here, it looks like it's like 4,500.
Speaking of your mic.
Looks like it's like 4,500 at the end estimating, so it looked like we budgeted it, we didn't use that amount for the remainder of the year.
We intended, it probably has had some interest earnings this year. What we do is go ahead and appropriate the entire fund, just in case we do need to expend it. And so it's probably just we missed appropriating the interest earnings.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Bill, do you have any questions?
Joe had one.
No, ma'am, no question.
All right. Joe?
On the FTEs, don't need to answer that right now, but I think would be very, very helpful. Pre-recession, there was a number. After recession, we're below what was pre-recession, and what I would like to also see is the account of the parks and the ballpark, because pre-recession, we didn't have that service. So it's actually, we have less employees per thousand if you take that service that we added after the recession than what we did pre, which I think is very helpful when we go out in the public and they talk about the growth of employees. Actually, it's not what it was pre-recession, and since we added that new service, the ballpark, it's had even less. So if I, if I can at some point get those numbers for you, what I'm out about, to explain that to them, where in my view, we're doing more with less. So that's just my perspective, but I think that adds to that dynamics, we explain the new service and what it was pre, so.
All right. So just to make sure we do the right thing, it sounds like you'd like us to go back and look at our position account at the peak prior to the recession?
Right.
And kind of compare it to today?
Right.
And kind of highlight those changes, like something such as the ballpark being added?
Yeah, I think it was around nine, if not a little higher prior to that, and then we added the ballpark, which was post-recession. So it would be nice from a comparison when we're out in the public trying to explain to them, not only do we add more service, but we got less people per thousand than we did prior to that. So that, to me, that would be helpful when we're out and about.
We'll be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes, Bill, you're on.
Okay. Now I have a question. We have historically, as a community, not used the employee count per thousand, because we have, over time, realized that that is a, it's not a fair comparison because there are so many things that affect the employee per thousand count. For example, if you've got 150 square miles city as opposed to a 50 square mile city, and your populations are exactly the same, your level of service is not the same because you've got three times as many or as many road miles, et cetera, so therefore you need a larger. So, and, let me just back up, as a staff, in the late 2000s, when we had a management study done that claimed that our number of employees per thousand was excessive, as a staff, we said that is not, that's not an accurate statement for various reasons that I just mentioned. Well, now we're going back in the opposite direction. I think there's a better way for us to describe what Councilmember Pizzillo was trying to get at without using the employee per thousand count, because if we're just counting bodies, we're setting a bad precedent. And I'd like for staff to figure out if there's a different way to describe that, because if you take that body count and you go back to 2007, which was prior to the recession, we were like 11 employees per thousand, but we were, and our budget was much greater at that time. I don't know that we're doing more with less, we'll talk about that later, but I think there's a better and a different tool that we can use to describe that measurement of what it is. what it is that we're doing as we continue to grow our employees to, to take care of the service. And I think it is in the performance measurement perspective that perhaps that's how we should be describing it rather than a plain employee per thousand count.
Thank you, thank you, councilman. We, uh.
You address it.
I, I do want to let you know, we're comparing to ourself and not to others because you are absolutely correct that comparing our count to others is a near impossible task because of those great differences. But I, I hear what you're asking for are some other ways to kind of show how we're doing today compared to ourself a number of years ago. Is that, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I, I think to a certain degree, yes, but the polar opposite of this is what is the position that we took as staff in two thousand six, two thousand and seven was we cannot use body count as the sole describer of what it is that we're doing and how effective we are being. And that was our position because we were being criticized for it. Now conversely, we, we flipped that coin completely around in twenty nineteen and now we're saying, look how great we're doing because our employee count is down below, is, is less than it was pre-recession. And that's not, it's not a fair and accurate representation. So I, I think there's a different way to describe it. Uh, I just, I don't think I'm in a position, and obviously over the phone, to get there, but, um, but I think that there's a, a capability on staff to identify, how do we, how do we talk about this? Not using body count as the, as the way to do it. That's, that's my only thing. Because when it was bad for us, we said body count is bad. Now that it's good for us, we say body count is good. And I don't, I don't think we want to be headed down that road right now because we've got so many, so many positive things to celebrate. I think we need to find a different way of, of describing what that celebration is as opposed to using counter arguments when we like it and when we don't.
Just a minute, Joe. Go ahead, Laurie, you have a response?
Councilmember, I, that, that, we are certainly not trying to say that this is information that justifies the budget. We are, and we've been providing this data for as long as I've been here because it is an item of interest that we've heard from the council. I'm more than happy to spend time looking for some other means to provide a number of ways to kind of validate our budget and, and our efficiency and what we're doing well as we move forward.
Yeah. And please, I'm not suggesting that there's a, and it may be difficult to, to, uh, to see, to see that over the phone. But what I, so I'm not, it's not a, it's not really, it's not a criticism, but when council member Pizzillo says, I want to see what it looked like before, now we're all starting to get into that, into that circle. And, um, and we're going to use that as a, see how, see how efficient we've been when in fact, there's too many factors to, to really look at it. So I don't know that there's, that there's necessarily a response needed or anything else, but I think philosophically, and I know the manager and I have had that conversation previously and we'll have it again next week before the next work session. So there may be an, an oppor, there may just be an opportunity in this. That's all, that's all I'm saying. There's not a criticism in there, there's not a, anything else. I just, um, you know, I think we have a good story to tell. I just, I think we need to find a, a better, instead of doing it in a crayon, we should be doing it in watercolors, that's all.
And I, and I certainly didn't intend to imply there was, make you feel like we felt there was a criticism. That's certainly not how it feels on this side.
No, I have.
Good. I, that's not how I intended it, so thank you so much.
I have to agree with her. We did not get that perception, Bill. It's better that you stated that and brought your point up. Council, Joe, go ahead.
With all due respect to council member Stip, I have a differing perspective and I wasn't looking to compare us to others because I agree with him on one point. We can't compare cities to cities because there's a lot of variables in there. But like any other number, accountants or any financial analysis does, you compare yourself against yourself. Those are great benchmarks. And what I was trying to get to was looking at what we do or what we did prior to great recession, adding on new services is where we are now. Now there may be other things to add on to it, but to suggest that we were going to compare us to other cities, I know that's impossible. We got more area, we got more fire stations, we have more miles, we have more roads, we have more pipes. But any accountant will tell you whether you're looking at the standard industry code or whether you're looking at yourself. Trends of what you're doing is an important measurement of how you're doing. Now again, you can look at performance measures, you can see how efficiently we're doing it. And then we even looked at lean at some point to see what we're doing on there. But I would argue that if ourselves, if we're getting more efficient at doing things, then then compare it to ourselves, and there may be others, I think that's a worthwhile way to look at it. So again, we can agree to disagree on the approach, but I can tell you, there's no indication that I would want us to compare us to other cities because there are too many variables. Some contract out all their park services, some use park. But unless we've changed significantly how we're doing that, I think there's value in comparing ourselves to ourselves.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All righty. So we'll move on to the general fund. The general fund, again, a reminder that that's the tax, you know, that's your sales taxes and your property taxes, your state shared revenues and user fees for certain services that are very specific such as a recreation service or in, in our case, a lot of development-related activity from permit and inspection fees. So, but the hundred and sixty-one million dollar general fund budget, about sixty percent of it goes to the day-to-day operations of police, fire, parks, the administrative portion of the organization, your streets and the development activities. Again, about, about a quarter of the general fund budget is going to CIP projects and we'll go over that in more detail. And you can see the contingency there at ten percent. One of the financial policies, I didn't cover it before because I knew we had it here, is that we assure that we do not use one-time revenues to pay for ongoing expenses. So we usually present you the general fund budget in its one-time and its ongoing portions. We do this at the forecast. So this presents the city manager's recommended budget in those elements. And what you'll see at the bottom is we actually haven't spent all of our ongoing resources on ongoing things. So there's about another three hundred thousand. It's certainly appropriate to go that way, to spend some of your ongoing resources on one-time things because we continue to then build capacity to take on ongoing in the future. And I'll use this as the point to, to point to the operating cost set aside of the three point six million. That is the situation where we have forecasted the operating costs of capital projects we're planning on building in the next several years. And we're spreading those costs over several years and building capacity in our ongoing budget to pay for them when they come online. So not only do we have the three point six million, there's another three hundred thousand that is not being used for ongoing purposes this year. And comparing this proposed budget to the current year budget, again, the capital projects are making, skewing this somewhat, this comparison. But the day-to-day operating budget is going up five point nine percent or five million. Three point six million of that five million are the ongoing supplemental recommendations and the balances, the salary and benefit increases, both those negotiated with fire and police as well as those for the non-represented employees. So that, that's where that increase comes from. And then again, the, the contingency goes up because it's fifteen percent of ongoing revenues. And then just providing you the information that yes, we continue to fund the asset management funds. And you can see we're planning on, planning on spending ten point nine million next year on those asset replacements, things like vehicles and the right-of-ways that, on those ten-year plans.
Mayor, I have a question.
And that's an overview of the general fund, so perfect time.
Perfect time. All right. Wally, go ahead.
So I have a quick question, Laurie. The fifteen percent, is that about equal to three or four months?
It is about equal to two months of operating costs.
Just two months.
Yeah. We, you, we recommended you change to that policy a couple of years ago. It's a lot easier to manage in developing the budget because every time you change an expenditure, you have to change that contingency. This way, we just have to do it on revenues and.
Did it used to be three?
It was, uh, three, the first three months of operating costs.
Then it dropped.
And then it dropped to fifteen percent.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Laurie?
Well, before we leave this general topic, through social media, somebody is, a constituent is watching the work session online and, and had a comment about the ratio of employees to residents that I thought I would just bring up. So that has to do with perhaps, is it possible to check, use a number of transactions, either transactions per, um, per employee or per action, transactions in regards to, to doing city business as a way to counting?
Councilmember, mayor? The, that would be a measure that might be used for a specific department because what transactions would we measure on a citywide basis? And that's really where you, as you start to dig down into performance measurement and trying to evaluate, you know, in progress or improvement or, or not, some of those measures, you get down into that type of thing. So my department, you might measure us on the size of the budget. The HR department, you might measure on the number of city employees. So that's certainly one of the types of measures that you could use. It will be a little, it's probably not as easy on a global basis. But we will continue to work on the concept of coming up with some kind of citywide ways to look at it. And then when you, we actually publish the budget, we do include some information on individual department measures and comparison for the two prior years.
Great.
Thank you. Yes, Sherry?
And I, I, I think that's very interesting that someone had a comment on that. And I, I think it's also important, the last about three or four years, we've added two police squads. And I, I think maybe when we break those numbers down for, for Joe, that we do break down where the public safety element is as well. And the, to fill those fire stations, we already hired those.
Correct.
Employees for those positions. So those would be in the higher amount of.
Yes. This year, we hired the fire positions required for the station one eighty-six. You're correct. And that station won't open for another year or plus.
And I think that's important to get that out there, that, that we've already incorporated some of the growth into those numbers. And then my other question, it, it follows up on Wally's question, that I think this is kind of an important for people to understand. We're talking about the contingency fund. When we shortened it, that would be for two full months of, that'd be like nothing coming in, right? Which is unlikely that no money would come in.
Correct. It assume, yeah, it's about what we spend in two months to pay all of our bills.
Yeah. So that's everything that no money. I think that's another thing a lot of people don't necessarily see that it's the full amount that obviously a contingency fund, it can be two months because you wouldn't expect no revenue whatsoever for two full months.
And, and just to be clear on that, that isn't what we, our minimum fund balance ends up being. That's just a, a cushion to have in the budget to, in case something starts to go way bad.
I know.
We end our year with more than that fifteen percent because we're conservative in our revenue and expenditure estimating. So it, it, we could easily pay three months or four months of expenses in our actual ending fund balance.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that's a little clearer, that it's more conservative than that.
I think that's a reassuring statement for the people that are questioning it. Joe?
To get to what, on social media, you could be talking about workload indicators. For example, at the court, how many cases are they processing per person? Or for the police, how many calls are they making per officer? I mean, there's a lot of workload indicators. I think you already have some of them that can look at how that's, over years, has transcended itself on those workload indicators. And that, that do, is kind of, you kind of mirror with all these other indicators to see how, how you're doing there, so.
I think the statement they made, there's so many different departments that the number's different. And so to make an assumption and bring that forth in such detail, I can't imagine we'd get a number of calls. Someone that is, works in the HR and, you know, in civilian life or this, they're going to call and declare, hey, you're not doing this right, you don't have the right numbers. And I know because I work here and this is what we have. And so I think the misunderstanding sometimes comes in the culture or the process of how city government, now they're going to say to me, ah, just city government, you over-hire, you know, that, that government. So there are those people that might give me or present that. But overall, I think it's very difficult to make a comparison. And so I guess whatever information we have, I guess is, we'll have to, we certainly don't hide information, all right? So we always put it out. Did you have something? Brandon?
I just piggybacking on that. So I mean, and that's how we justify our head count going forward too with those type of indicators. I mean, we go through the process where we see an increase, we have contractors that are supporting those roles and we see that increases and then we need to justify head count. So I know there's a process that has to go through to even get to here where we're recommending thirty-eight type positions where we've justified every single person and the need for them, so.
Yeah. For, and, and an example is, you'll see we're recommending a city attorney position. I think they had fifty-five percent increase in their workload two years ago and I've had a hundred percent increase in their workload last year. So we're measuring those kinds of data points to, as you're saying, to help justify why needs are in, why, why increases are needed. It's part of the due diligence of the budget process is to say, hey, you know, why do you need it?
I mean, to the public, I mean, we're not, we're using hard numbers, not using just, and we're just not thinking, I need an extra person for no reason. I just, we're using hard numbers to, to understand, understand and then justify those, so.
You're correct.
Well, I think the progress we've made in Goodyear and the number of companies and businesses and the number of CIP, it talks for itself. You just observe those numbers and number of employees and the size of companies, you name it, is all a reason. And I think we said, when we decided to go forth with all of this activity that has been presented us, that if there's one thing we wanted, we wanted them to be able to do the job and do it well within the timeframe that we have, that we have agreed to with the companies that are going to break ground in our city. So sometimes it's a reputation that you have to make sure you're going to keep because if we fail that, and I've said it before, then they're not going to knock at your door like they're knocking right now. So you have to play all that side of it in too. Bill, do you have any comments? You, I didn't call on you.
Yes. And, and I really appreciate this discussion because this is exactly what I was talking about a few minutes ago, that if we only use the body count per thousand, that's not telling the story. But these other things that everyone's just said in the last few minutes is exactly what I was talking about. That I think people, if we automatically grow, you know, ten thousand people and therefore we should have, you know, X number of bodies because our, we want to keep our body count at, you know, seven point one, then that's not really telling the story. As opposed to workload has gone up in the, in the attorney's office fifty-five percent one year and then another fifty percent the second year, therefore we've had a hundred percent increase, therefore we need to, we need the position. It, that could have, that all could have occurred with little or no growth depending on what those activities were. So I'm, I'm glad we've kind of taken this thing full circle and, and appreciate everyone kind of looking at it from that perspective.
Thank you, Bill. Any other comments? Go ahead.
All righty. Now we'll walk into the CIP. As you'll recall, we did not adopt or present a full five-year CIP for this year because we could see that there were challenges as costs were escalating and we were struggling, kind of almost like the mayor was saying a little, a few minutes ago, we were struggling with all the workloads that were out there and the diet desired projects. So we went back and we've taken about eighteen months to review the CIP. And the process involved, starting with the departments, they were asked to submit their requests for capital projects in the next five years. They were asked for repair scopes for those. They were asked for repair scopes for those projects, so that we all understood what was going to be delivered. And then, they prepared initial cost estimates. We did use an outside cost estimating service to help cost some of our projects. It was both to get those costs as well as to compare to ourself. Did we do a good job in estimating this cost, or where did we, maybe, what were we missing before? And that, in fact, we're going to continue that in the base budget, so that we can continue to have that kind of assistance moving forward, because this wasn't a one-time exercise. We've got to do this every year. The engineering, the budget area and the procurement area then reviewed the department requests, asked a lot of questions, pushed departments for, can you really do this all? You know, is this something you can truly implement in the times that are here? Because, again, we are bringing forward a CIP that we feel we can deliver within budget as well as within the timeframes. After those reviews, there was executive team reviews as well, where more difficult questions were asked and were raised. And as we went through the process, the key constraint on our ability to bring projects forward was our administrative capacity within the organization to implement them. And it's not just the engineering department or the procurement area, it's also the departments themselves. If you're hiring 14 firefighters and training them and trying to construct, to, you know, manage the construction of two fire stations, it may be difficult for you to start designing a third fire station. So, it was, it was those kinds of, can we do it with project management? Can we do it with procurement? Can we do it within the departments? Type of a review that was the primary thing that changed timing of projects. So, changes from the last CIP you saw, obviously, I mentioned, it's now a full five-year CIP. We have made a practice change previously for something to be considered CIP. We set that level at 50,000. We've increased that to 100,000. No, no reason other than it's a way to, you know, a degree of difficulty kind of indicator and a degree of involvement from some of the service providing departments. The CIP includes all funding sources. So, previously, all the asset management work, we counted for in the regular day-to-day budget. If it's an asset management item, like replacing a very large piece of equipment, like a fire pumper, that's now showing up in the CIP. It doesn't change the ultimate funding source or how we're funding those funds, it's just we're bringing those items into the CIP where they can be more critically reviewed and considered. There are cost increases from the prior CIP. Again, I think we talked to you in, in March and talked a little bit about some of the cost escalation that's incurred through the valley. In some cases, the scopes were not clear, so we've clarified the scopes. And with those clarifications, we may have found costs that we hadn't included before. And we, again, have been much more thorough in what costs are included. We've asked questions like, do you have the land in? Do you have the cost to buy the land? Do you have the road work that might need to be done, just like we would require a developer? We, we need to do the work that's required when we build a new project.
Question? Brandon?
For these capital projects, do we have a capital reserve? I noticed that in here, where if a project, like say this HVAC, the HVAC units all break at the ballpark in year one versus year five, do we have a contingency for that kind of situation, where we can shift or move other things out of the way? And then, on top of that, do we have something, a contingency where, I don't know, a risk type register or something in place to where we thought the scope was one thing, but then we discover some underground utilities that weren't there when removing dirt, that now we have to account for that, that then might shift some other priorities around?
So, let me answer that in a few, a few pieces. We have asset management funds for things, for technology hardware, vehicles and rolling stock, for parks, parks right away, or the right-of-way maintenance, and for traffic signals. If in one of those areas, if, if a police cruiser is involved in an accident is totaled, we would ask the fleet department to look at their planned replacements and see if they can do some swapping, so we can try to absorb that within their allocation. In terms of a capital reserve, you will see in here a project called capital reserve. That is not, this year's budget did include a capital reserve, but that was because we hadn't adopted a full CIP.
Yeah.
And we knew there were projects like the recreation campus that needed those funds. So, it was holding those for just in case needs. But, in terms of the, we're not going to recommend appropriating a capital reserve for just in case, because the projects should have a contingency within them appropriate to their project. So, I think that gets to all your areas of question.
Yeah, and I just didn't see that contingency within the project itself for expanded scope or, or something, if something was, was off from the original scope or just an unknown thing comes up that they didn't account for, I just didn't see that in here as line items.
The way that, I believe, and Julia can correct me if I'm wrong, we've established the scopes of the projects. If the scope needs to change, the department will have to come forward and request more resources to change their scope. So, we're telling you, this is the scope of the project, this is what it will cost us to deliver it, and this is the timeline we can deliver it on. So, we are holding departments accountable to the scope as well as to the, the time and the budget. So, we will hope that we will have savings and that we won't, we aren't planning on allowing scope creep. So, if suddenly your project's coming in 500,000 less, we don't see that as an opportunity to expand your project. We see that as an opportunity to take care of another one-time need moving forward, unless there's a desire to come forward and have a conversation about changing the scope. We've established an internal committee that meets every month to go over the CIP project by project, to see where each project is in terms of its budget, its timeline and its scope.
Good. I wasn't sure if we had like a PMO project management office or a group that reviews all of those and checks all the metrics for each project or not, so. Okay, no, that's good. Thank you.
Joe?
Yeah, I appreciate the accountability on scope creep and if for some reason, that comes up before us. The one question I have is the project timelines. I assume before this all gets adopted by us, you will have detailed project matrix timelines, so that we can use that as well to ensure projects are done on time, on budget type of thing.
Yes, mayor, council member. We are currently working on those timelines. We had to get to the point where we knew which projects were being recommended in what year. And so, now, we're going through the process of, again, where we have the timeframes of how long we think design will take, how long construction will take. But, we also then have to say, they can't all start on July 1.
Right.
So, that's the exercise we're going through right now with procurement and project management in the departments. You will have that scheduled before you adopt, or as part of tentative budget adoption.
And I appreciate that. And all costs, I assume, includes building permits, all the ancillary things that go into building the particular CIP project.
That, we have a costing list that we provided all departments that had kind of, here's all the brainstorm list of things we think you should consider in your cost estimates. We're, you know, done, tried to go through all of those thoroughness reviews. You know, like I say, engineering's, project managers helped us go through those analyses. We reviewed those in the finance department. You know, we've done everything we think we can do, and we're, we're committed to delivering this CIP. Thank you.
Sounds like great teamwork to me. Any other? Yes, Wally?
Well, I do appreciate how thorough we are being now on our CIP, because we have had some difficulty in delivering what we had thought was going to be delivered. Did I notice a project manager position just to review the CIP, didn't I?
No, there's not.
Or contracts and things like that?
There is a, there is a one-time amount that's been included for a project manager for next year because of the large volume of projects that we have. It's, we do have two fire stations, a recreation campus, and a surface water plant project. Those are tremendous projects for this organization. So, we have included money next to one, funding for one project manager on a temporary basis.
Right, and he will be overlooking all of these different projects as they come online as long as he's.
There is.
Employed by us.
There is a, in the current year, we have reallocated a position from the manager's office to be a deputy in the engineering department. And that person's role would be overseeing the CIP in terms of getting those projects done. So, that, that's where that kind of a more high-level overview is.
Right, that's our second eyes looking at it.
Yep.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Bill, do you have any questions?
No, not at this point.
Hey, thank you. Are we ready to go? Go ahead.
All righty. So, here, just a couple, two looks at the five-year CIP. As with most CIPs, they're kind of heavier in the first year and they taper off. Ours is unusually large in the first year, because that big blue bar in that first column, which is next year, is the surface water plant, you know, well over $100 million project. The green in that first bar is the recreation campus. And the yellow is representative of the two fire stations. So, so there's a lot going on there. The big yellow bar in 21 is primarily the civic square project. And so, we'll go on from there. In terms of where this money's coming from, it's a little bit more balanced, again, here. General fund is the green bar on the bottom. You'll see it's not the primary funding source for the CIP. Those bright pink bar for next year and the purple are the revenues associated with the surface water project. Those are impact fees and bonds. But, just gives you kind of a look at how it's paid for. The CIP that we're recommending next year includes 84 projects. That's a lot of projects. Some of them are continuing from this year, others are new next year. The five-year plan includes 130 projects. The recreation center, in terms of, it is scoped at the full build-out. So, that's an example of one of those projects that maybe the scope wasn't quite as clear and, and it wasn't certain what we were building. So, this does include the scope of the full build-out with the track upstairs and those types of things. The infrastructure improvement plan projects, as we went through the impact fee project process update, those projects are reflected if they are in the next five years. There are, it's a 10-year plan, so not all those projects are reflected. And you will see something called a general fund capital project reserve. But, unlike what we were talking about earlier, it is not a place to go for just in case something costs too much, or just in case we didn't remember something. That is, we looked at the five-year forecast that we did in January, and we laid for one-time funds and what was left, we said, okay, the CIP is using this much. There are a couple years where the general fund CIP is harder than the forecasted one-time general funds available. So, what this capital project reserve is doing is it's saying, next year, we're putting, or we're holding back on spending, I think it's $5.5 million, because we need that in '21 and '22 to pay for projects in the CIP. So, it is committed to projects in the five-year plan. So, that is a change from what we saw in this year's budget. And that is how we're able to say we have a funded five-year plan, as we're providing for those resources as part of the five-year forecast and the five-year plan. Kind of some, just some highlights of changes or additions, new projects. The civic square is included. It is in 21. That is an exciting project that I think we're all looking forward to. You'll also see a reserve called the civic square reserve, and that is one of the funding sources for that project. It takes whatever general funds, one-time general funds were left after the five-year forecast, and we covered the CIP. We masked all of those resources to help pay for the civic square project. GO bonds are also paying for that project. And we will be using increases in ending fund balance to also pay for that project. Another project you'll see that's an addition is the historic Goodyear water line replacements. We did do some work in that area with some CDVG grants, but it's a bigger project that is in the new CIP for five years, and it's, it's an essential project. There's also a direct potable reuse pilot project in the, I believe, the third year in wastewater. That's an important project as we continue to address water needs and water reuse.
Sorry, Brandon?
I should probably know this, but are we going to pursue CBG money for historic Goodyear water line replacements continually while this five-year process is going? Or are we just going to try to use CBG money for something separate and use our capital project money for, for this?
The, one of the recommend, I mean, I think we'll pursue whatever grant resources might be available for any of the projects in, in the city. You'll see that there's a supplemental recommendation to add a position in the manager's office, which one of the roles of that position is to better focus us on seeking grants. So, the fact that it's in the CIP won't suddenly make us stop looking for alternative funding sources.
Okay.
So, we thought the CDVJs weren't, where they, they are. So. Brandon, before you came on council, and I was the primary for that committee, we did get several grants to do the, the water. And unfortunately, that's about the only kind of a project that we can get CBDG funds for. So, it's to our best interest to continually apply, because I believe it's almost our turn now to get a portion of it. And what we get, it just means we don't have to spend that of our money. And it'll never be enough to do the whole, replacing all of the water lines. We can ask for it, though, and then just take what they give us. Yeah, that's what we can do.
Mayor? Yes, Sherry?
I have a couple of questions, and I might have missed it. I know we had talked about the ambulance program a couple of times. Is that going to be under this part here, or does that go under another part that I missed, or?
The introduction of the ambulance program by the city was actually budgeted in this year. I think it was budgeted the year before. It's been.
I know, it's been sitting there somewhere.
You'll see it in the carryovers, because we funded all the one-time costs of it in, when we adopted the budget initially. And so, you'll see that some of those resources have been spent this year, but the balance will carry over into next year to be able to prepare to deliver that service.
Until we get the CON, we can't do anything.
I know, I just wanted to make sure there was a spot, that it was being held somewhere. And then, I have two other questions. The first one is with regard to the water line replacement and the LED streetlights. I think as we go through it, it might be nice so the public knows the timeframe for those. Obviously, five years, that's still not going to replace all of the water lines. It's my understanding, just everything in that community needs to pretty much be replaced.
Yeah, we, we have multiple, in the five years, there's three or four years of funding. It's my understanding that that is the whole project.
Oh, good.
But, it's spread over the five years to get it done.
And then, the other question is the two key projects. I know we originally had hoped to have those done at the same time, and we're having to bump those out a little bit. bump those out a little bit. And from talking to the city manager, I, I understand what's going on and, you know, the city staff and the ability to do those. Is there going to be, for the fire station, do we still get to take advantage of the costs of scale to build that since it's going to be similar to the other ones? Or is it going to cost more for those projects to delay them or how's that going to work?
The, the, the process that we used is we costed all the projects in the current year, dollars. And then once we decided what year we felt we could accomplish the projects, we've added inflation. So the, you know, so if a fire station is pushed back two years, it is more expensive two years from now. And we assumed inflation would be a little higher in the first two years of the CIP than in the last three years, just because of what's happening in the economy. But we don't, you know, the fire stations specifically, there's a generic design being created, but every time we do a fire station, that will have to be adapted. So there'll still be some design that has to happen with each one. But again, it's the ability to stretch your resources to keep track of what's going on on three or, you know, two or three fire stations at once is the thing that has moved both the police ops phase two and the West Goodyear projects back one year. And, and just as a, as I think we've tried to communicate, if for some reason, some of the projects we have planned for 20 go much more smoothly than we expected and they get done more quickly or they're, they're not as demanding, we can always find a way to move a project forward. And so we can always come back to you and say, hey, we have really good news, you know, we've saved some money or something, you know, something worked very well and we feel like we could move, you know, one of two projects forward. Let's have a policy discussion about what we want to move forward. So we will, you know, it, it's clearly a commitment to these projects. It is the administrative capacity to implement them that's holding us back.
So we'll still get that economies of scale for that basic design and we can tweak it for the third one as it comes online? Okay.
Wally?
Is 181 in this year's budget?
181 and 186 are partly funded in this year's budget. Both of those projects are more expensive than was in this year's budget. So next year's budget includes the additional resources in order to accomplish both of those projects.
For both of those.
And you'll see the same thing will carry over the funding from this year into next year in order to construct both of those projects.
Okay.
So, but they are both fully funded in between this year and next year in the CIP.
And on our radar.
On our radar, under design now.
Okay, very good, very good.
And certainly it's a projects that when we were looking at the time of when they can start, the recreation campus, the fire stations, the surface water are all at the beginning of the pipeline since they're already in the pipeline.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you.
Go ahead.
All righty. The other couple of projects, we've talked about the couple delayed. The LED streetlights, you've heard about those before. They're proposed, I think in the second year of the CIP. And they would be funded by essentially the electricity savings. And then there's also a police and fire command vehicle in the CIP, joint vehicle that they'll, they'll be using for their purposes. So that's kind of the CIP. They did, I wanted, one thing I didn't do as I went through this is, one of the things you've asked us about is projects that departments may have requested that didn't get funded or project changes. So in your materials in the CIP section, I'll give, I'll show you kind of how we presented that information to you if you have it handy. If you look at page 12 of the CIP section, it's the fire departments page. And what we're showing at the bottom of that page are the other projects that fire requested that aren't in the five-year CIP. And the way, and so what were, they asked to renovate three existing fire stations. As we went through that review process, we didn't have a good enough scope to cost those projects. So what is happening with those is you'll be approached to approve a budget transfer and a use of a contingency to do a study to see what we should do with those stations and what would be involved. So it would be doing the work so that we have a scope so that we could cost it for a future CIP. They also asked for an apparatus spare program using existing replace, or vehicles that are replaced. As we discussed that with them, we found that there aren't any apparatus coming up for replacement in the near term, you know, in the next several years that would be appropriate to be refurbished for this purpose. So there's just, it's just not time yet to do that project. And then there was also a request for a new support services building. And again, we're not prepared to move forward with a scope or a costing of that until we look at, you know, one potential is old station 181 could become that. So until we complete that study, we really can't recommend a capital project that we can adequately cost scope and, and put a timeline to. So each department in this section, if they requested projects and they weren't included, we've identified kind of the cost range and then why it wasn't included. And then you'll also see on the pages, there'll be, if you look at page eight, which is an engineering page, we have up in the section where the funded projects are, we've included a future year project total. So in that case, like the Astrea Bridge, it is a scoped project, it's a costed project, but we won't start it, we'll start the design and construction in 20, or design and land acquisition in 22 and 23, but we won't be ready to award construction until six years from now. So we're just letting you know, this isn't the whole project. There's more to do with this project, it's just not following in the five years. So that's kind of how we're sharing information that you've requested on, on projects that may not have made it in as well as making sure we're disclosing the full cost of projects if they aren't in the full five-year CIP.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Just, oh, I'm sorry. Just general. The projects that didn't get on the CIP, it could be two components. First, money, second, resources. Is that correct?
We do not, there were no projects moved out of the CIP because we could not fund them. So everything that's been moved out of the CIP has been as a result of sitting down with those departments and having a difficult conversation about your ability to implement.
Well, that's, that's.
But it's not because we don't have the resources. It's all been because, you know, for example, there were a lot of traffic signals requested. But so far, we really haven't been able to implement more than two per year with our existing resources. So we're only recommending two traffic signals per year. So it's not because we can't fund more traffic signals, it's just what we believe our administrative capacity is now.
Yeah, and when I talk resources, I'm talking both financially and human, so.
And I'm just clarifying that it's not the financial resources.
It's the human.
That push these off. It is the human resources.
Okay.
Interesting. Bill, did you have any questions?
None on this part, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
So it is about 10 before 6:00 and the next section of the presentation is to start walking through the department budgets. So I don't know if you, if there's a desire to take a quick break or, before we get into that, or if we want to start into the department budgets.
Uh, 10 minutes, is that it?
It'd be nice, thank you.
Great, we'll take a 10-minute break. It's now almost 5:50.